We normally start our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. If you're able, please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll start with some housekeeping. We still voluntarily allow remote participation. If any of the planning board members are participating remotely, we will do votes by a roll call. If you are in Cyberland and wish to attend the meeting using a computer or smart device, visit www.zoom.us typically with a browser or unless you have the Zoom app installed. The meeting ID you want to select is 754-663-912. You may also call in by phone for audio participation only with a phone number of 646-558-8656, same media ID, 754-663-912. If you have technical difficulty with any of this, please call 603-845-5585. If you are on the phone and you wish to be recognized, hit star nine to raise your hand, and once recognized, hit star six to unmute. I will now introduce the members and staff who are here tonight. Alternatives Mr. Wood and Mr. Appleton, our planning director, Ms. Roboto.
Good evening.
Planning clerk, Ms. Wilson, town council liaison, Mr. Chase.
Good evening.
Member, Mr. Healy.
Good evening.
Member, Mr. Minavini.
Good evening.
Vice Chair, Mr. O'Connor.
Good evening.
To my far left is Mr. Reventer, who is the Wizard of Community Access TV.
Good evening.
And we have with us tonight Samuel Fazioli, who's the new engineering coordinator.
Good evening.
Who will be joining us for most meetings from going forward.
Good evening.
And we have a couple empty spots. I would like at this point to seat Mr. Appleton for Mr. Fishman. Mr. Churchill was also absent, but we don't have an alternate for him. Mr. Malaby, who is our secretary.
Hello.
And my name is Dave Nelson. I'm the chair.
For Mr. Pelletier.
Oh, Mr. Pelletier is also absent, yeah. And we don't have...oh. Yeah, we can see Mr. Wood for him.
Yes, we can.
Yeah. So please come up and join us, Mr. Wood. Hope it wasn't people eating too much over Thanksgiving that caused this lack of attendance.
Too much pie.
Too much pie.
Too much pie.
All right, we having our members seated. The first matter on the agenda is escrow. We have item number 25-25 for 5B Street.
Okay, this is for the new Euro stop located at 5B Street. It will be cash escrow in the amount of $181,098.55. The escrow will be non-interest bearing.
And I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second. It was moved by O'Connor, seconded by Malaby to accept the escrow as presented. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Minavini?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Appleton?
Yes.
Mr. Malaby?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Next, we have the minutes of November 19th. Everyone had a chance to review them. Are there any errors or omissions?
No one stepping forward. Mr. Chair, then I move to accept the minutes as written.
Second. Moved by O'Connor, seconded by Malaby to approve the minutes as written. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Minavini?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Appleton?
Yes.
Mr. Malaby?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. I peeked in the folder. We don't have correspondence. I don't think we have other business either, do we? No. So, planning director, chairman updates.
Hey, really no updates other than for our next meeting, we'll have two plans. One's a subdivision, the other's, I think, a lot line adjustment.
Okay. And so, I got nothing.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to our public hearing for Shade Tree Farm LLC, PID 07084-00362 Drew Road.
Okay, so in September of '25, wow, I'm like thinking, was that a year ago? No, just a few months ago. The board had before it an application for a revised lot line adjustment for the lots under consideration this evening. The revised plan presented in September decreased the proposed adjustment area from 1.7 to 1.64 acres and denoted an access easement area across 96 Drew Road that benefited 62 Drew Road. The plan also provided 41.3 feet of frontage in Derry to 96 Drew Road, which is still less than the required 200 feet. The applicant had sought a dimensional variance for insufficient frontage, which was denied by the ZBA, and the applicant withdrew the lot line adjustment application without prejudice. The proposal before the board this evening is for a lot line adjustment between 62 and 96 Drew Road. Both lots are zoned LDR, which requires a minimum of three acres and 200 feet of contiguous frontage per lot. 96 Drew is bisected by the Hampstead and Derry Town Line. The intent is to adjust the rear lot line of 96 Drew Road, which is parcel 10113, to add 15 acres from 62 Drew Road, which is 07084. This will result in an adjusted lot acreage of 22 acres for 96 Drew Road, maintaining the existing 128.67 feet of dairy frontage. Total frontage for the lot, including the portion located in the town of Hampstead, is a little bit over 565 feet. As a variance had been required for the previous application, staff discussed the need for relief for this request. The difference between this application and the former is that the non-conforming frontage for 96 Drew Road will not be changed by this application. The September application increased the non-conformity of the frontage. Staff sought the opinion of legal counsel at New Hampshire MA, and based on that opinion and discussion with code enforcement, the lot line adjustment application as presented can move forward without a variance, as the adjustment does not affect a lot line connected to frontage. However, any future subdivision of 96 Drew Road shall require a variance to subdivide a lot with insufficient frontage in the town of Derry, and a note should be added to the plan to that effect. Regional impact typically does not apply for lot line adjustments. The town of Hampstead commented on the previous application pursuant to RSA 674532 and stated their concern would be that there may be backland that becomes landlocked in Derry, and the property owner would want access via Hampstead roadways for a future subdivision. The town of Hampstead would like reassurances that easements would be in place via dairy land to access the dairy property for any future subdivision. Since there remains frontage in the town of Derry, I believe this concern has been alleviated, but would welcome discussion from the board on that. Regarding waivers, parcel 07084-03 was surveyed by Lavelle Associates and is depicted on a plan provided to the planning department dated July 21, 2021, submitted to the town in September of that year. That was shown as parcel 07084 and parcel 10112. That plan was not recorded, as the proposed subdivision was denied by the board. Subsequent plans prepared by Promise Land Survey were approved by the board in 2023 and noted the Lavelle Plan as a plan of reference. During the 2023 public hearings, the board approved a waiver to not provide a survey of the then lot, 07084 and 10113. The current application is requesting a waiver from LDR Section 17024A4 to not provide a boundary survey of parcel 07084-03. That is the very large parcel that goes in the back 62 Drew Road. I had provided comment to the applicant surveyor that it was really difficult to see what the applicant was proposing based on the plan submission, and it would be helpful to see at least the proposed new bounds for 96 Drew Road, and that has been provided to you this evening as an exhibit. And so, the recommendation would be to review the application as presented this evening and review the waiver request.
So, a couple items that maybe we could follow up and get clarity. The town of Hampstead wants some sort of assurances about future subdivision behavior. To what extent do we actually have the ability to do that?
If a future subdivision came before the town for 96 Drew Road, unless they're just using it for access, if they're going to use part of that for a lot, there would not be enough frontage to do it. So, that was, that came out of discussion with the code enforcement officer.
Okay, so there are...without a variance, we wouldn't be able to allow them to?
Not to subdivide, no.
No?
No. No, but we have a lot line adjustment before us, but we just wanted to make that clear because last time we looked at it and said, you don't have enough frontage. They had moved the frontage almost zero and then to 43 feet.
Yeah, I just want to be careful that we're not trying to promise something to Hampstead that we can't promise, because this board cannot bind a future board's decisions.
No, that is true.
So...and as to the Lavelle Plan, which was submitted but never recorded and then cited in a subsequent application, is that plan on file anywhere in the town?
It's on file in the planning department.
Okay.
You know, my concern would be that, you know, we do have digital records of it, but in the event that, you know, sometimes, sometimes files get lost, so we just, but I think Eric can speak to that.
Well, let's, okay, I just wanted to clarify those issues. We should probably accept jurisdiction and get to opening public hearing before we accept commentary on that. I just want to clarify what those issues were. So unless there's any other immediate questions on the completeness of the plan, what is the board's position on jurisdiction?
Mr. Chair, I move to accept jurisdiction of the lot line adjustment plan before the board for Shade Tree Farm LLC, PID 07084-00362 Drew Road and Gino Spero, PID 1011396 Drew Road.
Second. Been moved by O'Connor, seconded by Malaby to accept jurisdiction. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Minavini?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Appleton?
Yes.
Mr. Malaby?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We don't have to worry about regional impacts, so can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Moved by O'Connor, seconded by Malaby to open the public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is open. Gentlemen, you can make your introductory statements.
Good evening, Chair, and the rest of the dairy planning board. My name is Eric Salavich with Northam Survey out of Dover, New Hampshire. Here with me tonight is Brett Allard with Shaughnessy &amp; Allard out of Manchester?
Bedford.
Bedford. Gino is at a family event and was unable to attend this evening. We are here with a relatively straightforward lot line adjustment application between two properties essentially owned by Mr. Spiro, one in his name and one in his LLC name, Shade Tree Farm. The lot line adjustment, you have your existing map 10 lot 113 exists as a seven acre parcel that will be acquiring approximately 15 and a half acres from the current 65 acre parcel known as 66 Drew Road, tax map 7 lot 84-3. Post-adjustment, 96 Drew Road will exist as a 22 and a half acre parcel, and 66 Drew Road will exist as a 50 acre parcel. There is one waiver application with, or one waiver request with this application, which has been slightly discussed here with the board before we had a chance to speak. That is for the remaining survey of the 50 acres. That lot has been surveyed a redundant amount of times in prior, by other firms in prior applications, most recently for the subdivision done by Promise Land of 66 Drew Road. And we also have a stamped existing conditions plan of the entirety of both of these parcels by Promise Land, which is reference plan number four on the plan set before you. So, both of these parcels have previously been surveyed. We requested the waiver because Northam Survey, my firm, did not survey the full 65 acres. We did, of course, survey the existing seven acre parcel, and we did, of course, survey the 15 and a half acre adjustment area. So we have verified all of those bounds, we have verified all the math, and everything that goes along with the adjustment to create the 22 and a half acre parcel. So, the waiver request again is for the remaining 50 acres, which has been previously surveyed by two different firms, subsequent applications. That is that. I didn't want to have any confusion lead out. I just don't want to claim somebody else's work and show math that I didn't do.
Okay, so, the plan that we're going to be looking at to record, you do have your surveyor's stamp on that, so I think that's fine. Does anyone have any questions about the other leg of the parcel that's not really involved and changes tonight? Nope. Okay. So, other than the waiver, this is pretty straightforward. Does anyone have, anyone in the public, either cyberspace or physically in the room, have comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, seeing you're on the rise online at this time.
All right, so back to the board, do comments or questions? Hearing none, and we have a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Before, can I make a comment before?
Yeah, sure.
Is it possible to review the suggested conditions of approval with the board, as I have questions on a few of these that I would like to address before we close the public hearing?
Go right ahead.
All right, thank you. So, the majority of the conditions are relatively straightforward. We have no comments, you know, the owner's signature, of course, you know, the setting of the bounds. I believe we don't have to set any bounds for this particular project, but I may be mistaken, but any iron rods or granite bounds that need to be put in would obviously be installed. We would note the waivers and a lot of the addition, additional notes that are requested here, which are straightforward. The one thing I would ask the town is the condition for subject to an onsite inspection by the towns engineer. That is a unique condition of approval for a lot line adjustment, so I would question that condition, as well as adding a note to the plan that future subdivision of a parcel 10113 shall, shall require a variance to subdivide a lot with insufficient frontage in the town of Derry. I don't believe that condition would apply, and I would turn that over to Brett for some discussion as to why that condition wouldn't apply.
Yeah, I'd be happy to touch on that briefly, and I think sort of our concerns were, or sort of the realm of which our concerns are, were raised briefly by the chair when you talked earlier about the inability to bind future boards. And certainly, a potential future, as far as we know, there's no future subdivision of this lot that's anticipated. To the extent there would be a future subdivision, I think it would have to be addressed and taken on its own merits to determine whether a variance would be required or not, because certainly any potential future variance that would reduce the amount of frontage in Derry would require a variance from the zoning board. And there's already been an, a subdivision application or a lot line adjustment application that proposed that, and it did go to the zoning board. But theoretically, and purely theoretically, there could be a potential future subdivision that doesn't require a variance. For example, if someone put a road in there and could get a couple lots, and they all satisfied all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, that would be a subdivision that wouldn't require a variance.
So, maybe we could rephrase that condition to indicate that...
It may require variance?
I think the purpose of the note on the plan is caveat emptor for anyone who wants to buy. They're unnoticed that...my understanding is either the zoning ordinance changes to change the frontage requirements, somebody appeals to the Supreme Court and they overrule Derry's opinion that the frontage must be in Derry as opposed to in an adjacent town. But absent those things, yeah, you're right, the only way to subdivide this would be to put in a subdivision road, which is perfectly possible.
There's suggested conditions, but if you wanted to change it to may as opposed to shall, these are all suggested conditions for the board, so...
I see. You could say the subdivision of parcel 10113 in its current configuration would require a construction of a subdivision road. It's putting it in a more positive fashion.
I think my recommendation would just be to, well, I understand the caveat emptor, so to the extent we want something, you know, something could be in there, but I think putting it in there, it doesn't really, doesn't require anything more than would otherwise be required, and doesn't require any less than would otherwise be required, because a potential future subdivision plan either is going to comply with the zoning ordinance or it's not, and it's either going to require a variance or it's not. So my concern would just be that this could potentially cause confusion. I think it could be taken out entirely, but if it is going to stay in for, as you said, caveat emptor purposes, I think we just want to be really careful with how it's worded.
So, I understand your concern, because things can change. We live in a semi-litigious society, and I think the planning department has become more aware of caveat emptor issues, so that whenever we make an approval, we need to be sure that we're not potentially withholding useful observances that a buyer might rely on, and they might come back at us. So, I understand it's not really a condition of this approval, it's really putting a buyer on notice, so does anyone on the, our realtor isn't here tonight, so I can't rely on him. Anyone have any suggestions on how we might do this in a less onerous way for the applicant?
Maybe a note that, doing this on the fly, so I haven't thought this out, but no future subdivision of the parcel will need to, but I mean, that, to speak to attorney, you know, would need to comply with, you know, existing regulations, but to speak to Attorney Allard's point, that's a given anyways. It may be sufficient that this discussion about that, you know, we're going to be looking hard at like the frontage requirements as part of this record may be sufficient, but it's not, anyone looking at a future, at the plot is not going to be put on notice.
Both points are well taken. Members of the board have some opinion on this, a way in? Mr. Healy?
Yeah, I would say the original suggestion, changing it to may, would probably work. I think I'd be comfortable with that, because with it being right on the border, I think you'd want that out there so people know that it may, because of the insufficient frontage in the town of Derry, it may require a variance.
Oh, great, you have a realtor in the family, so by second proxy. You're our, you are our expert tonight. I'm going to let you follow through with that.
So...
I agree with, with, with Neil.
So, you like the current wording?
Not, not the current wording, just replacing the shall with a may as was suggested. I think that's probably the cleanest way to do it.
Okay.
Would you, would you add the current configuration?
Well, that, again, presumes future facts, not in evidence, so I think maybe just making a may is probably sufficient for caveat emptor purposes. Does anyone disagree with that? So, the other issue of, the other condition you asked about was the inspection by town engineers. So, Mr. Newly seated town engineer, given that the only thing that we're really going to require of them is setting a bounds or certification of bounds are set, is that something that the engineering department normally would inspect?
I believe so, yes. It's a standard thing that we would require for anything like this. It would be really quick, it wouldn't be a significant inspection, but it would be something that we would check once it was all complete, yes.
So I provide a letter of certification with my professional seal saying I set the monuments?
We would just go out, make sure it's set where it says it's set, and everything would be all right.
I just questioned it because it was unique, but I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that's the only thing that came to my mind was physically verifying.
Yeah.
Proper monumentation according to our rules, what has, what has to be granite, what has to be iron pins and whatnot.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, so I think we can probably leave that one and then change the other one to a may. Any other concerns on the conditions?
Nope.
Okay. Again, can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Moved by O'Connor, seconded by Malaby to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
There was someone in the audience raising their hand. I don't know.
Oh. Oh, I asked you to, yeah.
You need to come to the mic.
So, gotta reopen again.
Yes, reopen the public hearing. Yeah, we were hoping you'd come in on the first call, so I'm sorry. Yeah. So, move to reopen the public hearing, please.
Motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second. Motion by Minavini, seconded by Malaby to reopen the public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, please come forward. You're going to need to be at a microphone so we can hear you, both in the room and at home, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Dennis Isbell. I've been at 74 Drew Road and have owned that property for 40 years. We moved to that area because it is a nice, quiet area. It's a great place for our kids to grow up. Having the land that we have or had behind us especially, I and several other people who have done similar, similar things are opposed to any changes to that land to be subdivided because of obvious reasons. There's increased traffic with all that kind of stuff, there's increased noise. We have already experienced increased noise with some of the things that have been done to the property at, I think it's 66 or 62, I'm not sure exactly. Again, and I don't look, looking at these kinds of plans are not my expertise, so I believe that I'd like to leave that up to the experts to do so and point out just exactly what's happening here, because I don't know what's happening here. I'm sure that other people that are on the road have the same feelings, and I, you know, I like to voice my opinion in opposition to changes to the land. There's already been numerous changes to the land that personally I believe have made it less likable to live in that area.
Well, we can ask the engineers to come back up and maybe on the screen, they can use the mouse and kind of highlight what parcel is being added where.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is all great if you're the kind of people that create or use these all the time.
Now, as to the objection to any subdivision of the land, we are bound to go by the rules. So if an application comes in and it meets all the rules, we have to say yes. We can say yes, but, you know, add some trees here, or yes, but move that boundary pin. But we can't remove landowners' rights because neighbors want to continue to enjoy open space. I've told previous, you know, butters in previous meetings, if you really want to preserve the open space across Mew, you need to buy it, because we can't remove someone's land rights for the benefit of other people. The Supreme Court, both at the state and federal level, have made that abundantly clear. So if there are mitigations to specific impacts, we'd be happy to consider those, but simply say, well, no, you have to leave this as a large tract of open land. I don't believe that's lawful for the planning board to do, so I'm sorry.
Okay. I get that. I'd still like to know exactly what's happening here, and it's not clear to me with this.
Yeah, so, you got a mouse? Can you?
I don't have a mouse, but I do have a tax map. Elizabeth, I'm regretting not sending you that exhibit digitally today. So, here's the best way to look at that. Up here, I think Elizabeth might be handling it. I don't want to speak and talk over.
Yeah, so let me...
Yeah, so let me observe that, for those watching at home, this is a fairly large parcel, and drawn at normal scale, there is this dashed line called the match line. Will you highlight that for us? Basically, you have to cut the two sheets and then tape them together along that line in order to get the whole picture.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't really fit on one page, so that may be confusing to people, panning back and forth between the two sheets.
Yeah, so that's why, I'm looking up at this locus right here, and essentially, this awkward shaped lot is the existing 66 Drew Road parcel. So this is 65 acres, and it wraps up and around the back of 96 Drew Road, which is the seven acre parcel here, and this is the town line. So tonight's proposal essentially cuts this peninsula off, and we're going to transfer this piece here from 66 Drew Road to 96 Drew Road. So 96 Drew Road will be shaped more like a mushroom, and it will be existing as 22 acres, and the 66 acre parcel will be reduced from, at this spot, to be a 45 acre parcel.
Okay, so...
Makes sense?
It kind of makes sense, I can understand that from what you're showing.
So here's the tax map. This is the new proposed lot line. So this piece, which is currently 66 Drew Road, is going to be a portion of this lot here, so this lot will, will go on the, this boundary line is going to be... And this large parcel will...
And this is?
This is 66 Drew Road.
Okay, so this is the part that's wrapped behind us.
Yep, this all goes behind you. And this large piece here is going to be a portion of 96 Drew Road here. It's a lot line adjustment, it's not a subdivision.
I get that. Yep.
Yep. Minus the hips, though.
Yes.
Okay, so what is this, what does this do for parcel of land?
Yeah, so, I'll get into that. The parcel is under a purchase and sales agreement. I know this is kind of irrelevant to the case, but if the butters are interested, so the parcel will be sold outside of, you know, Gino won't own it anymore come January, I believe. A family that has horses is moving in, so they're going to utilize the barn, they wanted some additional field space out back. So that is the proposed plan for this parcel of land.
Work?
I get it, I think.
Anything that they would want to do in terms of other structures, I don't know, another barn, a paddock, any of that, that's going to be subject to a separate permitting process, though, and they'd have to go through that, they'd have to go through that permitting and approval process.
Okay. That helps me be a little more clear on what's happening.
Okay, great.
I believe that's all I can ask for at this point.
All right, if you, if all your questions have been answered one way or the other, then we're happy to have, answer them for you.
Evan, you have it? Good? Okay, I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Since we opened the public hearing, anyone else in the room?
Efficient.
Want an alibi? Anyone else online? Want an alibi?
Mr. Chair, seeing none rise online.
All right, so...
Mr. Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Moved by O'Connor, second by Malaby to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. So now on the waivers, or the waiver. What is the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to grant a waiver from LDCR Section 170-24A, parentheses four, to not provide a boundary survey of parcel 07084-003. After review of the waiver request, the board finds that strict conformity to the regulations would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
So moved by Malaby, seconded by Chase to grant the waiver. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Minavini?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Appleton?
Yes.
Mr. Malaby?
Yes.
And share votes yes. On findings of fact?
Mr. Chair, I move to find the proposed plan does not alter existing conditions, which would affect access to the lots, ensuring the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood remains unchanged as a result of the lot line adjustment.
Moved by Malaby?
Seconded.
Seconded by Wood. All those, I will poll the board. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Minavini?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Appleton?
Yes.
Mr. Malaby?
Yes.
Share votes yes. And on the conditional approval, just note that we're, we're changing one word in it as written.
Yep. Mr. Chair, I move to approve pursuant to RSA 676:4 Roman 1, completed application, with the following conditions.
Skip those two, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just go right to the after review, yeah.
Oh.
Thanks.
Sorry.
That was me, that was me.
Boilerplate error.
After review, and, Mr. Chair, after review and deliberation of the lot line adjustment plan, application for Shade Tree Farm LLC, PID 07084-003, 62 Drew Road, and Gino Spiro, PID 10113, 96 Drew Road, the board finds the applicant has satisfied the general requirements of the Land Development Control Regulations, or in cases where the regulation cannot be met, has satisfied the waiver requirements. Therefore, the motion is to approve pursuant to RSA 676:4 Roman 3, expedited review with the following conditions. Subject to owner's signature. Subject to onsite inspection by the towns engineer. Establish escrow for the setting of bounds, or certify that bounds have been set. Note approved waivers on the plan. Obtain written approval from the planning director designee that the GIS submission is received and is operable, and it complies with LDCR Section 170-24C. Add note to the plan that future subdivision of parcel 10113 may require a variance to subdivide a lot with insufficient frontage in the town of Dairy. Conditions precedent should be met within six months. Submission of the appropriate recording fees payable to the Rockham County Registry of Deeds. This includes a $25 L chip fee, recording fees for the Mylar, and the notice of decision. Add note to the plan stating approval by the Dairy Planning Board in and of itself does not effectuate a change in the lot line configuration. The approval constitutes recognition by the town of Dairy that the lot line configurations as proposed are in conformance with local land use regulations, or are otherwise accepted with nonconformances. The documents reflecting conveyance of the lots by deed should be recorded at the RCRD subsequent to, or in conjunction with, the final Mylar, and a copy of the recorded deed should be provided to the Planning Department for the file.
I'll second.
Moved by Malaby, seconded by O'Connor to grant conditional approval. Any questions?
I just had one, so...
Healy.
The property, so some of these, one of the conditions precedent shall be, conditions precedent shall be met within six months. Now, if they're selling the property, does that impact any of, any of this, if they're selling it prior?
Well, if they want to sell the property, they might need to meet all the conditions sooner, and then we can sign off sooner.
Okay.
Six months is an outside, not an inside.
We do have a 30-day appeal period, so we can't record before that expires.
No, that's true. There are people who could appeal this within 30 days of our decision.
Okay.
Is that it? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Minavini?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Appleton?
Yes.
Mr. Malaby?
Yes.
And share votes yes. I think that brings us to the end of our agenda. Other than any board member comments, does anyone have elements to make to us tonight? If not, could we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by O'Connor, seconded by Malaby to adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you very much.